Meeting for the CARES Act Fund to order. And the first item on the list is going to be the invocation. I'm going to ask Commissioner Harvey if he would leave us in the invocation and Commissioner Goddard in the pledge of allegiance.
Us power heads, gracious having Father, we thank you for an opportunity today to work for our fellow man here in Putnam County. Father, this is a big, a big item that we need to address today, Father, and we just ask that your guidance and your wisdom flows directly from your throne room into our mind today, Father, and our heart, and let us deliberate properly today, Father. We ask that you be with our country, if there's any unrest that's going to take place, Father, we ask that you be there and guide us and protect us, Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Goddard. Next item on the list is a public comment. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect that the board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Do we have anybody here with us today that would like to make public comment at this time? Please come up, Ken. If you'd just state your name and address for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you. And thank you for having me. My name is Ken Moore from the American Legion. I'm the post commander, Burt Hodge Post 45 Placa. And I'm, just was bringing up, are they going to come over the CARES Act program that will help the nonprofits?
I don't really know how to answer that, Ken, because I realize that it didn't fit your situation. I saw your, your interaction and I think it was in a newspaper and, but we don't make the rules.
I understand, I'm not blaming anybody here. It just, everything, you know, specifically states that cannot replace funds, donations, or sales during their time, and being a nonprofit, that's everything we use it for. So it didn't benefit us in any way. I just had that question for you. And I understand.
Yes, sir. I understand, and you're not unique in that same position.
Yes, sir.
Though, but yeah, there are certain things that we just, you just can't use it for income replacement or anything like that. That's just part of the rules that comes down from the Fed and the state.
Yes, sir. I understand, and again, I don't, I thank you all for what you do, and I don't blame you, I just, you know, I wanted to see if there was going to have anything to come out for the nonprofits who suffered loss during that time. But, alright, thank you all very much.
Yes, thank you, Ken, for coming. Seeing no one else here for public comment, I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to move into the CARES Act discussion that's in your packet, and I'm going to turn this portion of it over to Ms. Young.
Good afternoon. I believe I'm six feet from y'all, so if you're okay, I'm going to remove that. The agenda packet this morning is quite robust, so if it is the will of the Commissioner, if you'll allow me to take a step by step through it, and we can discuss it item by item, I think it's going to be most easily to, to take bites of it at this time. Item number one is just simply for informational purposes at this time, or was included for informational purposes at this time. I believe you'll need to reference it as we move forward through the discussion on the other items. But if you'll remember on 9/29, we had a spin plan, a summary spin plan that the board approved, and the detailed spin plan is then page two, and that's the 9/29. Yes, sir.
Jeff, we just, we just started the actual packet. Okay. Sorry, Julie, go ahead.
No problem. Good afternoon, Commissioner. So the page one and two is, is that spin plan that we brought to you on the 9/29 special board meeting that was approved. And then what you're seeing for page three is what we have as an updated spin plan as of 10/20/2020. And that accounts for the board authorized contracts, the United Way to administer the Individual Assistance Program, and the board authorized DOH Putnam $52,000 for, and some change, for their testing center staffing and that kind of thing. So obviously, we had to make some minor modifications, and if you'll notice from the, if you, if you compare the two, the majority of what happened was we reduced the county's allocation, and then took a few other items that were, had been deemed FEMA eligible. The sheriff's office went ahead and applied for some FEMA funding, so that relieved some of their need as well. And so that's what you're seeing. So again, item number one is really informational purposes that I believe you're going to need as we walk through the discussions on the next several items. But before I move forward, are there questions on item number one and the spin plans?
You don't need any direction on item one, that's coming later.
Yes, sir. Just a point of clear.
Yes, go right ahead.
I don't have page three.
In your agenda packet, page three would have been. I'm sorry? I'm sorry, you're correct. The agenda item, which pages one and two, so you're talking about page five, is our current modified spin plan. Do I need to take a break? Okay. So just a point of clarity, there is no action to be taken at this time. When I, when I provided you all this agenda packet, we had just received word from FDM that we had passed the Funding Manager Review and was being sent to DEM for final review of our overall spin plan, our spin down plans, and that's what gets us access to the Phase Two funding. So last night at about seven, I got a call from our FDM liaison, and we are officially in Phase Three. That means our spin plan for the 100% has passed FDM's approval. Our Funding Manager has signed off on our Phase One spin and our Phase Two spin plan. Now, we will submit all the reports to reconcile that, but that also triggers the Phase Two money to hit our bank. And so now we are, at the same time Phase Two money is hitting our bank, as soon as we can report those funds spent, we begin our Phase Three funding, which is on a reimbursement basis. Okay, so just an update from the time the agenda packets were sent out, and again, I got that about seven o'clock last night.
And at what point do we need to determine where that money's going to be spent from until it's reimbursed?
Well, so that's item number two, and I don't believe, well, it's, it's the board's direction, and we'll move right into that. So the board can authorize a budget allocation, basically transfer, basically to fund this account until those monies change. However, the typical approach that we've taken on grants is to book a receivable and not to truly move dollars from one account to another. And that's item number two, and the clerk of court is here with us. We, the clerk of court would like clear direction on if we, the board desires us to use the CARES Act grant and treat it like we do other grants on a reimbursement, on a receivable basis, or if the board physically wants dollars to move from one account and then back to another account.
I don't think that's necessary, because what we do as a receivable is just pay it out of existing funds until the new funds come in and replace the receivable on the financial statement, right?
Yeah. We let finance, this is finances kind of portion of it.
We do that all the time with, okay, sorry. We do that all the time. We only have about one or two grants that are, that we ever get upfront, like all your SCOP grants, LAP grants, all of those, we have to pay the money out first, and then we get reimbursement after the fact.
Okay, so you just want a direction of the board that it was all right with us if you treated it like previous grants and just did a receivable? Does anybody have a problem with that by consensus?
No problem.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, so with that note, you know, we've got, we had stopped paying out the small business grants because we've already reached the first funding level, and so we were waiting on that second pot of money before we continued on with that.
But you can go ahead and book it as a receivable now and move forward? You comfortable with it? Okay, good deal. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. That, that concludes item number two unless the clerk or finance needs anything further for that. Okay? Then I'm going to move on to item number three unless we have questions. Yes, sir.
Yeah, go right ahead, sir.
Susan, I did have a question. Are you going to, the next 25% is going to be hitting our bank account from what we understand. You're not going to really treat that as an accounts receivable. You're going to have that money available.
That's correct. 20%.
20%.
20%.
But after we go through those funds, then we'll start booking them as a receivable until it's reimbursed.
Got you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, sounds good. Thank you, Ms. Young, please continue.
Okay, and next is specifically geared towards the small business and nonprofit grant program, but the same theory or principle applies to our Individual Assistance Program. It's just a few steps behind us because it launched after the other two. So essentially, I'm here today telling you that we have 357 eligible small businesses and 53 nonprofit eligible entities. That's as of yesterday, so it changed again this morning. It changes every day. And we have 239 in missing document status. So what I need to know from the board is, do we suspend new applications until we work through the missing docs, or do we allow it to be first come, first served, based on the first to become eligible?
I think what needs to happen is that we need to, we need to give the people that you've been working with for weeks and possibly even months to furnish the documentation that would qualify them. We need to give them a time certain, that it's like a week or 10 days, and at that point, if they haven't furnished the documentation, then they need to reapply. Because what's happening, if I'm understanding correctly, when I discussed this with you earlier, the people are actually taking a spot in the queue. And so somebody that may or may not ever turn in documentation, and y'all have been working on with for a month or more now, possibly, or even longer, and they haven't returned documentation, or they can't return documentation, or whatever, we've, we've got 49 businesses that can't be funded because they're, we're out, we have spent all the money.
Correct.
And so with that being the case, those 49 businesses that, that could, that, that could support, give the supporting documents, can't, can't qualify because they're taken up by somebody who may or may not, and we don't know how many of them there are out of that 239 that's actually taken a spot. So we're going to have to give them like a week or 10 days, do your documents or reapply, and then we can start moving the people up that, that are over the limit, and start moving them up that qualify into the queue.
Okay.
So I think that's a, that, that would be the way to take care of this, to get the people out that are not going to ever qualify. And also on top of that, it would give a week to 10 days, and that would happen, and then you're going to be able to bring in the other qualifying businesses that are right now just sitting on the side.
Right.
So that's a, was, did I communicate well with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, it's complicated.
It is. Staff would recommend a week over the 10 days, just because many of these businesses have already been contacted, and we've been pulling things out of them for a long time, so.
Okay, so a week, and give them a week, and, and if they haven't given them the documents, then they're, they've got to reapply?
Yes.
Okay, I think that's what I'd do. Commissioner Harvey, do you have something, sir?
No, I'm good right now, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls, do you have something, sir?
Why would you not just leave them the queue? Work around them. They, you know, if they're number, number six, you go to number seven, number seven qualifies, move them, get them funded, and leave them where they are. Just, you know, I would think we just send a notice out and say, we've attempted to contact you, we've attempted to get your, your other documentation, you're still short. When their money runs out, the money runs out, because we had agreed that we're going to do this until the money ran out.
Right.
And I, I would say, let's just keep moving forward, and if, if other people come in and they're diligent and able to get their poop in a group, as my office manager says, then so be it.
I think that's what we just propose.
Okay, but, but not, not, not giving them extra time.
So staff's okay with either option?
Yeah, I, I would, I would say just keep moving forward and not, you know, I, I wouldn't want to put any more burden on the staff than they have right now. Just keep pushing forward, get the money out, and.
Wouldn't that put less burden if you could go ahead and do that, or would you rather just move forward with the new ones without, without trying to get those others out of your queue? Because we have no way of knowing at this time, if we, I understand what you're saying, I don't disagree, so don't misunderstand, but I, I just don't know. I guess I'm going to ask what would be best on, on y'all. I know y'all have got four people working full time on this.
I know at the end of this thing, somebody's going to come up and say, I, I applied, I never heard, I, I never had a chance, and our answer is just going to be, if, if you, if you applied and you didn't turn the paperwork in and somebody else did, this happened with PPP, this happened with EIDO. Everybody got treated the same. So, and when that first round, if you guys think back, when that first round of, I think it was PPP ran out, I mean, it was within five days, but they still had people that were in the queue. Everybody had to understand that. Then there was a second round, and there might be a fourth round, it sounds like, coming up soon. So I'd say whatever the path of least resistance is to getting the, the funds distributed, because they're, they're needed sooner than later.
Yeah, I agree. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that when you, I know that you have contacted these people and they're missing documentation or whatever, that when it comes down to the time period where it's over with, that they are notified that, hey, no more time.
That we're out of funding.
And you have to reapply. Okay.
We will do our best to, to let them know when we're out of funding, or that they have to reapply. And that's where staff's really looking for the direction of the board. Are we going to set an, a timeline for them to furnish the documents that are outstanding, and then tell them they have to reapply? Or are we going to fund first come, first served, based on an eligibility status? And that's, that's what I.
If I understand correctly, if all the people that, that have currently applied, if they were funded, we're 49 over the limit already.
That's correct.
So we're.
And I have a handful of them sitting in.
We can do like Commissioner Rawls says, if that's easier on you, or like I said, if it's easier on you to give them ten, uh, seven days to, to show that it's urgent, you either do it or not, and then at the end of that, I think we need to do that, just to let them know that they have one more shot at trying to, to get their, their paperwork together, instead of just leaving them in the queue until we spend the money, because I think it's going to go on and get spent if we, if we leave it open and move it forward. Commissioner Pickens, were you done, sir?
Yeah, I'm done.
Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. That's not the calls I get. The calls I get is I turned in all my paperwork, and I've heard nothing. And that's what I get, and then, and then that's not true. I mean, you helped me with one yesterday that contacted me at the football game Friday night.
Right, right.
And didn't even mention it until Monday, and I'm like, why didn't you talk to me Friday night? I was hearing, you know.
A lot of these have, we.
But they think they've turned in everything, so what's the breakdown? Where, where are we missing this at?
But, sir, that particular request, even if we take that, and that's a good example, because it's not an anomaly.
Right.
She believed that she had turned everything in. She had been told on multiple occasions, you haven't, and here's a list of items that I need. And then I even got involved that morning when she had come to you, and sent her a detailed list. You haven't submitted this, I can take this or any of these alternatives. You haven't submitted this, I can take this or any of these alternatives. She called me an hour later and said, I'm not sure what I need to provide to you. So to some degree, I, we can't run their businesses for them, and, and ultimately, she still was confused after I talked to her for a good period of time, and we ended up having me work with her bookkeeper to get those documents.
See that? You shouldn't.
So there's, there's a lot of involvement in that, and that's just one missing applicant. So I spent several hours just on her after she had been communicated with multiple other times by staff. So I don't think it's fair to take the assumption that these people are saying they haven't been contacted. They may not be understanding, but we are communicating it in a, in a multitude of different ways.
Oh, I know.
Here, here's what we need. So that's why staff's seeking direction from the board.
Well, I didn't want you to think that I'm throwing you under the bus. That's not the.
No, no, no. No, no, but it's a good example, because it's one of very many, many.
But when I own my own business, it's, you know, it was Larry at the end, and that's not the, that's not the truth of what really took place, so, you know.
Well, unlike Commissioner Rawls said a few minutes ago, we hit the nail square on the head, is that, you know, if you're dealing with a bank, or if you're dealing with the PPP loans, or the SBA, or whatever, they don't call up, baby you through the process. If you're interested in having the grant, you need to at least furnish the information needed. If you don't understand, then you need to go hire a professional, because I don't see how we can take our staff and, and go and, and fill out all our applications. I mean, we've done everything that we could all the way through the process to help them out. So, and I'm not trying to be hard about this at all, but at some point, everybody's got to play by the same set of rules.
That's right.
And so I still think you need, out of an abundance of caution, for somebody that's just dilly-dallying around, instead of getting their stuff, that go ahead and give them a notice that in seven days, if you're either going to have to, if you haven't given us the documentation, then you're going to have to reapply. Then at that point, we can put the, we can put a, a press release out, because we'll know how much money we have. We can go into the 49, it may be that we can take another 29, I don't know, I'm just making that number up, but we might, could take another 29 if that many people dropped out of the, the original tranche of, of money. So is that what you're kind of looking for? I mean, does that answer whatever questions you need today?
Yes, if, if the board is, is satisfied with that solution, then that is the direction.
Are you satisfied with that solution?
Yes, we will, staff will contact those missing documents and give them official notice tomorrow, and then they will have seven days from tomorrow to furnish those, or we'll actually work with Wood O'Brien to put them in a non-responsive category. Basically, they didn't respond to our inquiry.
They could reapply if they wanted to try again.
Correct, correct.
Okay, all right. Is that okay with everybody?
No. That's clear.
Okay.
In the meantime, just to be clear, the application will remain live on our website. However, if someone applies, they will go into basically a hold bucket until we clear out these other entities.
That's correct, in order of when you got them. So I'm assuming they're dated when they get them or whatever, so you can take them in order. If we only get 30 drop out, the first 30 gets to move in and take their place.
Absolutely.
The problem I see with that is you're, you're, you're going to put people on hold, and they may be on hold for six weeks, hoping, and, and then at the end.
We don't have six weeks to, to be on hold.
The what?
We don't have six weeks to be on hold, so.
Well, it depends where they're on the queue, so if, if you give the 40 people tomorrow a week, then we're going to put any new applicants on hold for at least that week, and then if they come in and they have issues, you know, it's, this could, we could drag it out for them, so I.
But Commissioner.
I'll go, I'll go either way, but I, I personally would say, first come, first served. Whoever's, whoever's got their, their, their.
I think that's what we're doing, but the only way we can free up the first come is if we get rid of some that are in the queue, because each, when they come in, each one of them gets a number, and each one of them gets $10,000 put in their name until they drop out, or, or, and so we've got to clear up some space to take some more, is what I think staff is telling me.
You send, send them, send, send them a, a notice that says, you know, we, your, your application was deemed incomplete, therefore, you know, we're, we're going to continue working with you, but we're also continuing to work with other, other folks who are applying, and this is on a first come, first served basis, and it opens it up and moves the process along quicker, so. Or shut it down for a week, and, it don't matter. I'll go with it.
I think that's what we need to do, is we just need to give them a week, they can come in and then move them from the queue, and advertise for others if we've got any money left. If that's okay with the Commission. Okay, so, okay.
So our drop deadline was December 4th, correct?
For new applicants, yes. We, we, we did agree that we were going to work through whoever was in by that, that date, yes, sir.
Well, I'm hoping by doing, by doing this and freeing up the money within a week, that'll give us time to start working on these applications without it running out or sending money back. That's what we don't want. Did you have anything else for us today, Ms. Young?
Well, not on that item, but yes, I have several more.
Okay.
I'm not done with you yet, sir. Staff also needs direction on the nonprofit request proposals. Now, keep in mind, we just discussed, we are really at our max allocated monies for the $6 million for small businesses and nonprofits. So if we fund any of these in addition to requests, we'll be reducing the amount of businesses and nonprofits that can apply. So right now, we're over by 49. If we fund these, then you're going to have to up that number by each $10,000 that you allocate. That's just a side note to make sure the board keeps in mind that. The first of them is the easiest of all three of them. The Ark of Putnam County has requested an additional $15,132. The masses of this is personal protection equipment and sanitation or screening supplies for their vulnerable populations that they serve. Wood O'Brien has vetted this on a, on a surface level only, because we don't have any backup documentation, other than the one-page summary that you've seen. Wood O'Brien does not foresee an issue with this being eligible under the CARES Act, so it becomes a question as the will of the board.
On the Ark one?
Yes, sir, just the Ark one.
Well, there's nothing I want more than to try to fund nonprofits, so let's not take this as a fact that I don't, and that each one of them's already received a $10,000 grant. And when we talked about them being able to apply for additional, I think at that time, we hadn't spent all the money. Actually, overspent all the money, because we're over, not just to the, to the limit, we're over. So that means that we're either going to have to reduce a business program, or we're going to have to do something differently in order to, to fund the, the extra requests from, from the different nonprofits, or we're going to have to pay for it out of reserves. I got a real big problem paying for CARES Act expenses out of the county's reserves, out of the county tax dollars. So that wasn't the deal when we signed up for all this. We're, it's not like we're not seriously invested because of the time we spend in the bullpen, if anybody call that the, the office where the four ladies meet in there every day and do CARES Act work, but, you know, we, we have significant time and investment in this, trying to get it done already, so, well, I think that there's nothing I'd like more than to be able to give the nonprofits the extra money. I just don't see how we can when we've already overspent the money that we've already done. So that's just me. Anybody else have a comment?
I have a question and a comment. Is it, the, the money requested is, is in addition to the $10,000, or is it include the $10,000?
Yes, sir, no, that's in addition to. Their original request was 25, 132.
25s, okay.
They've received, or they've received the award eligibility for the first 10.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, so Commissioner Harvey, were you done, Commissioner Rawls, or now, or?
We, we have another option, which would be for us to reduce the amount of money that we're taking out and put that, because we're not talking about that much money right now. If, and, and there's absolutely no doubt that Epicure has provided a huge service during COVID.
Well, if we can take them one at a time, if we can take them one at a time, but the, but the first one.
Is the Ark.
Is the Ark, and so if we could kind of look at it first, and then we'll, we'll go through them, but even if we reduce the amount we're taking out, we're taking, the money's coming straight out of reserves, because that's where the money's going in, is reserves.
Well, we're, we're taking.
So we're taking money out of county taxpayer dollars to give to a, to a charity. I'm not saying it's not worth it.
Not necessarily.
I'm just saying that's what we're doing.
If we reduce our expectation of our CARES Act funding, so if we lowered our CARES Act funding by the, the 40, 10, and, or 40, 15, and, and 28, you've got $80,000 in round.
Where do you think that money's coming from? If we reduce the money coming to us, we're paying for it.
But we're, we've not incurred those, we don't have real costs incurred necessarily, is what I'm saying.
Sure we do. We paid that money.
We, we haven't, we haven't expended $2.9 million, but we're, we're taking that. So what I'm saying is if, if we reduce ours a little bit more, take that negative $600,000, make it negative $700,000, and move that money aside, we could fully fund them, and I, I, you know, I, I know what Bread of Life does, I know what Epicure does, and obviously, the Ark speak for itself as well, and in these times, I, I think it would, we.
Well, like I said, we got to take these one at a time, because Bread of Life's going to be a totally different story if you've reviewed your packet at all. Well, like I said, we gotta take these one at a time, because Bread of Life's gonna be a totally different story if you've reviewed your package at all.
What I'm saying is, make, make the two point six, two point five.
We're already at two point four, on your modified.
Okay, then two point three. And, and then, or, or a little, a little more than two point three, whatever it works out to, but-
Okay.
Then we wouldn't touch reserves, and we would fund it out of CARES.
If it's not coming to us in the reserves, then we're paying it out of reserves, that we just never got the money yet to pay out, but, uh, you done for now, sir? Uh, Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I, I'm kinda along the same lines as Commissioner Rawls, on the constitutional officers, we have paid, we have spent eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, and we budgeted, and I've got two different pages here, I, I don't know why, one's one million eighty-eight, and one's one point two, um, but taking, if we, if we reimburse them eight hundred and fifty-four, three fifteen, thirty-one, that leaves us two hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred on that line item, out of the one point eight eight, seven one five.
Can we just, can we move that money that far, or can we just move within the parameters of-
Tell me which line item, are you taking it out of the sheriff's budget?
Um, I got an email from Susan, that the reimbursements to the constitutional officers, eight fifty-four, three fifteen, thirty-one, and you had mentioned in your opening statement, that they were, the sheriff's department was trying to find some FEMA money too, to, to do that, so my point is simple, if it's one point eight eight, it's, gives us two hundred and thirty-four thousand left on that line item, do we expect any more money to be paid to the constitutionals?
So, we do, well, we, um, the allocation, so if you look on our first, um, detailed plan, and the easiest one to talk about it, because we've already talked about the fact that they found FEMA dollars, the sheriff's office initial request was for one million, and then they were able to find FEMA funds for a portion of that, we still have an allocation for them of nine hundred, now we could possibly see a reduction even of that, if FEMA really comes through from them, of a, of a minute amount of money. The, the number Susan gave you is actual paid to date, and we can only actual pay to date, actual expenses they've paid to date. So, when we did the fiscal year twenty, um, basically wrap up, what we paid out to the constitutionals was very likely only a portion of what they may request of us, now the tax collector expended her fir- full request allocation. However, the others expended a portion of it, um, and we have not had conversations to date as to how much more of their allocation they believe that they're gonna incur from October first to December thirtieth, because remember, that's the time we still haven't covered any of them for.
So, so maybe you answered my question, at fifty-three, one sixty, you're saying the tax collector is made whole at that point, and you don't expect any more back from that?
Not for, not for the tax collector, but the tax collector's the only one who spent a hundred percent of their initial request to date. The others have spent a portion of them, because the period was, when we asked for projected expenses, it had to cover them through the end of the year. So, um, the tax collectors were all upfront, most of her stuff was in PPE, sanitizations, um, modifications for staff, things like that, they, they had already made all of them. Um, but like the court system, um, they just sent me their invoice this morning to order the items that they need to reopen the courthouse into the next phase, so there's a lot of these items that are still yet to be implemented, and so that allocation to date has not been adjusted by any of the constitutionals. Um, the supervisor of elections, we're still working with him to see if we can get him have a funding, but, um, he obviously has expended probably every dime of that plus more, given the fact of the election and what he's seen.
All right, let me wrap this up then, so maybe what we need to do, this is my opinion, maybe we just need to put these three items on hold for a while, until we see exactly, maybe in a few weeks, where we're at on this item, because if there is any monies left, you know, and, and probably not take any more nonprofit requests-
And above, above, and above, okay.
Over and above the ten thousand, and just say, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna slow it down just a little, tap the brake, and if we can do this, we might be able to move it from a line item up, and make that possible, or, or maybe not make you completely whole, but maybe some of it.
Okay.
I have no problem with that at all, Commissioner, except for the fact that I do wanna discuss item two, and the reason why is because there's clearly items in the request on number two, that there ain't no way in hell they're COVID-related.
Well, staff would like, if that's gonna be this-
Item two to, with the Bread of Life?
Oh, okay.
They ask for, they ask for a new roof on their building and a new floor, the COVID ain't hurting the roof or the floor, you know, so-
Commissioner, if the, if the will of the board is to table some of these until a time during when we have a better-
They're not allowed to do that, Jeff, it's against the rules.
Sheriff's Department putting their conditioning system in there.
Not with COVID money?
Yeah.
Okay, well, check that up with them.
Commissioner, staff would ask, if it's the will of the board to wait and, and get a better picture of where we are in just a, of, of a few weeks, that we go ahead and at least discuss items two and three, because the consultant does have specific concerns about both of those proposals, and staff would like the time, if it is the will of the board, to work with those entities, if you would like to at least have proposals that are confidently a hundred percent CRF eligible, so if, if, if the board would allow us to still discuss-
That works, but as you work with them, I think you should tell them at that time, that there may not be funding for the additional, but we're, if there is, then we'll, we'll, they'll be prepared.
Right.
That was the will of the board at this time, Commissioner Pickens, did you have something else, sir?
I'm good, but I do think we should, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I do think we should probably not take any more requests over the ten thousand-
Okay.
On those nonprofits.
I agree.
Okay.
Cuz we're kind of, I mean-
We're, we're out of money, I mean, we, we have overspent this money, so anything we are, that we do from now on-
We've held back a pretty generous amount for ourselves, though, that's what I'm saying, there's, there is a little bit of flexibility, if we had to push under the seventy thousand dollars, it would kill us.
I think we can see that as we go forward, and maybe-
Yeah, I think that's the way to handle it, if everybody's good, so, all right, so you good with that item?
Yes, sir, so, um, when we, Bread of Life, can we discuss that one next? The ARC is, is pretty solid, and we don't have a lot of, um, reservations about them.
I thought we were just gonna take all three and move forward, and try to get them in a compliance situation, including the, the, uh, Bread of Life, and making sure that everything that Bread of Life and Epicure asked for was things that would fit within the, uh, within the scope, and then if we can find the money, we'll deal with it later, if we can't find the money, it is where it is.
I'm sorry, misunderstood you, but yes, that's not a problem.
What, uh, Commissioner Harvey was, was asking.
Not a problem.
That good enough with you?
Yes, sir.
And, and take no more additionals at this time?
That, no, not on the, above the ten.
Above the ten.
Okay, okay.
Even, even the, the business and nonprofits, if, if we, uh, it's kinda hard to, uh, take any, I mean, we're gonna continue taking them until the, the December fourth deadline, but all they're gonna do is go in a queue until we can, until we can, uh, fill up the, or re- release some of the original tranche of money that, uh, that, that will fund some of the next ones, and then we'll take them in line until they run out, or the program runs out. So, I think that was what we discussed earlier.
Perfect, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so, number four, are you ready for number four, did you have something else?
No, sir, I'm ready to number four.
Okay.
And I apologize, um, apparently my, somehow, something happened when we converted to PDF, and my text got cut off, Mr. Tim contacted me early this morning and said my sentence was not grammatically correct, so I have made a grammatically correct sentence at this point. Um, the US Department of Treasury and FDM has updated their stance on public safety, public health employees. A hundred percent of public safety and public health, regular wages and benefits are eligible for reimbursement for the period of March one through December thirty-first. The town of Interlochen reached out to us last week, and had, or the week before, and has requested to amend their request to add a hundred percent of their public safety staff personnel costs, and they're itemized there below, you can see it's an additional ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars. Staff is seeking direction on how the board is asking us to handle this, request by town of Interlochen, as well as the potential additional requests that could be received from the other municipalities and our constitutionals.
Well, again, we've already spent all our money, so if we are given, if we give them this ninety-one thousand dollars, then we're taking it straight out of our reserves, because we've overspent the money, and then who's to say that Interlochen gets it, or Crescent City, or Willaco, or the city of Palaca, or all of them get it? I mean, so, I, we have, if we hadn't spent the money yet, and we had two million left, then I'd be the first to jump on board, let's try to split it up and, and get it spent, but we spent the money. So, you can't keep going once you've spent the money, we have spent the money, go, just go ahead, sir.
But let's do the same thing we just did a minute ago, and let's go, you know what, we're not gonna deny it right now, but we've, we've kinda overspent the money, as the chairman has said, and we're gonna look at this when we get all done, but we've got obligations that we've already done, is that okay with, I mean, have we-
Sounds good to me, because at this point, we don't really know exactly where we're gonna, uh, fall out, but we're pretty, we're pretty sure that we have overspent the money with the current plan, so if, if that's gonna be the case, I don't see how we can open up this whole wa- can of worms with all the municipalities wanting all the money for all their, uh, fire and, and, uh, and fire services and police services and whatever, when we're already out of money.
Why don't we do this, why don't we send out, uh, a statement to all the municipalities, and let them know that we're at the end, um, budget-wise, that the money has, has been allocated and spent, leave this money in the queue, take a look at, at, at what we're holding back for ourselves, I still believe that we have money in there, that we have absolutely not, not spent, that we already had budgeted, and we had money in our budget to handle, so we'll not be coming up to reserves. Um, we don't have to pay our staff that was at the EOC, we were already budgeted to pay them anyways. We had staff that was, that was sent home that we had budgeted to, to pay, so we could take that money, instead of reimbursing ourselves, put that out there to them, um, but also let everybody know that we're done, we're out. We're talking a minor adjustment.
Fine with me, why don't we just hold it in, hold it and see what falls out later on, but just tell them for right now, just know, not right now, but we'll, we'll hold the request and see how it comes out in the end, I don't know how else to handle it, we've overspent the money, so if we decide to, to, uh, free a little bit up, uh, from what would come to the county, or back to the county, and use it to fund a municipality, that'll be a decision that'll have to be done later, but I just think you're opening up a terrible can of worms if you give it to one and not all.
Exactly, but we are giving it to ourselves.
I understand, but we're not doing it illegally by any means whatsoever, what's the difference between giving it to us, or giving it to Interlochen? Tell me the difference.
But I'm just saying that we're, for what we have for ourselves, they're, they're requesting a very small amount.
I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying, but it won't end there, it, then it'll be Crescent City, and it'll be Willaco, and it'll be Palaca, and it'll be for this millions of dollars from Palaca, because it's all the money for that time period, so you opening a can, it's not just a matter of paying one a little money and not, and less, taking a little less, it's a matter of somebody's fixing to be upset that they didn't get part, so, I think it's all or none, is what I think.
Is there any discussion of an, any more CARES Act funding coming from Washington, is there any discussion from, yes, there has?
There's been discussion.
Okay, I know, I know that they're talking about another two, two to two point two million, or a trillion, but I didn't know if, if there's been any discussion.
Yeah, but it's been being discussed for a while. Uh, Commissioner Harvey?
Okay, my point is this, and I, and I believe, I, I do agree with Commissioner Rawls to a certain extent on this, you know, what, maybe we do need to notify them and say, look, we're out of money, you know, we understand that the rules changed, the goalpost moved a little bit. Um, and maybe at the end, if we have any money left, then we can share it with our municipalities, based on some type of a pro rata share. But truly, you might not get the ninety-one, because we only got a hundred, and divided up by personnel, and you get ten, and they get fifteen, and we might not have any money left. And I think that's the way, I don't wanna say no, but we can't say yes, so we gotta say, let's shake this out, and if more money does come from the federal government, which I heard on the radio driving in today, that now everybody's starting to talk again, and that's gonna probably take place, but we've heard that for a long time, we also heard that it's gonna be extended into next year, which I think probably will take place, but right now, we gotta play with the rules that we got.
Right.
And they did change the, the rules, honestly, because it's nice to know this, before we made all these other commitments, that we were trying to help everybody. So, I think we just let them know, you can apply, we're gonna keep it, if we have money left, the board will decide what you get, and that's the bottom line.
Okay, well, that's good, let's just move it forward, but, you know, I think that whatever we do, we're gonna have to do for all the municipalities that are peace, and my concern is, is, you know, it's easy for us to stand up here and, without giving it much thought, and saying, well, let's put on another program, and, but right now, we got four people, it works for the county that haven't checked their own emails in two weeks, cuz they haven't had time for doing all this work on CARES. I'm not saying this isn't more important, or whatever, but we are putting some, we are, are using up some resources on this program in Putnam County, and at some point, it's gonna tell the tale, something's not gonna get done or fall between the cracks, so, you know, I don't mind putting this stuff on hold, but before we start up another program, or whatever, we need to see what resources it's gonna take, uh, is, is my point. Commissioner Goddard, did you have something to add, sir?
I did, what I was getting to is, is, uh, Mr. Harvey was alluding to, we were talk, we, we have been hearing that there are quite a possibility that monies will be coming out, so I'm still going along with what everybody else says, let's go ahead and clean up what we got, put a stop right there, and go ahead and tally what we can't do, because I do believe it's gonna come back, and the state's gonna ask us, and we're gonna say, well, we need this amount of money, uh, based on the facts that we have here, but I think that's the way we need to do, we can't maybe fund this one, and maybe fund that one, we need to put a stop to it, clean up, get your job complete, and, and then see where we are.
Good with you, Julie?
Yes, sir.
Everybody, anybody else have anything else to add at this point? Okay, was that all you had for us today, Julie?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is, uh, Terry, do you have anything to add today?
Uh, no, sir, I don't, I appreciate it, cuz Julianne needed some of that direction, I think she got while she needed a day, and, and thank y'all for, very much for that.
No problem, if, uh, there's nothing else to add here today, um, I'll adjourn this, uh, special meeting.